And basically, it's over to city engineer Kyle to lead the discussion. Everybody got a packet with, I think, thirty-eight pages in it. Nicely presented. I would congratulate you on presentation and the breakout of how each one will be financed. So I think it's very clear what you did and should help us formulate and narrow down the decisions that we need to make.
Yeah, and I think before we jump into the app, just I think a couple things to lay out today. What we're looking at is, we do have a couple of maps sitting up front, and we will toggle back and forth between the map and the CIP. Josiah's got that on his computer. First of all, let me introduce Josiah. I think everybody's met him, my colleague. Josiah and I work hand in hand with Stefan for this, so he's part of the team. So we will be toggling back and forth. We've got a couple of the boards. If they're in your way, let me know, we can move them or at some point we'll even take them down a little bit lower. So if you look at the map, the map is broken down into all of the projects that we have on the CIP today that was sent out to you. They're broken down and color-coded by year. So if you look at the legend, you'll be able to see down in the lower left there, yellow is twenty-twenty-six, blue is twenty-twenty-seven, red is twenty-twenty-eight, purple is twenty-twenty-nine, and then you have green, that's thirty-one. So that's how we have them spaced out as of now. And again, this is, this CIP, just so everybody knows, to me, this is a living document. This is a document that we will start to plan for the future. And as we move through and do projects or things come up, we look at this at least at an annual basis. And so as we go through, we have this plan out into the future. There's going to be things that will come up that will either move a project forward or backward. It could, we could get funding that may come that would fit one of these projects that would bring something forward. There may be other areas in town that aren't on the plan today that need to be taken care of at some point in the future. So this will be a living document. It will be something that we will keep up to date and have it for us and the public to understand what we're looking at doing into the future. Okay? This project, this CIP plan as of today has projects that came off your CIP plan that you had. So we took that CIP plan, we went through those projects, and we updated them. And what I mean by updated them is we went through and looked at the cost estimates and updated the cost to today's cost to make sure that the cost estimates were good. And then we also changed the philosophy of estimating cost for projects. A lot of the cost estimating done in the past was looked at a construction, just the construction cost, and then those numbers were relayed to you. And then we added in additional, what I call soft costs, which would be engineering, legal and bond counsel, appraisals, things of that nature. So we looked at each specific project and looked at what those soft costs would be, and those are what are built into the cost estimates today. So when we look at the cost of these projects, that's total project cost.
Can you speak into a microphone?
Would this one work?
Okay. So those project costs now are total project costs to do the project from start to finish. So now we're looking at exactly what is it costing us as a city to do those projects? Okay? And we see that up front. So those are how we've updated these. And then we looked at when we plan them from importance of, you know, earlier to later. We'll go through that in a minute. But and that's where prioritizing these, we really honed in on next year in 2027. We spent a lot of time on those and which are some of the main important ones. And really, 2026 is very important because we are getting to a point where we need to start making a decision what we're going to do next year to make sure that we can get the project going, getting designed, and get a bid early this winter so that we're getting favorable bids if we're going to do something next year. Okay? So we'll jump into the actual CIP, and that's the packet that you have. So if you look at...
One side note, we're focusing on streets and related infrastructure mostly here, right? Because there's other things like water tower rehabs that are out on the CIP that we will get to later, right?
Yes, there's other maintenance projects that we'll do as a city as we move forward. This one, yeah, this really pertains to city infrastructure, water sewer streets. Okay? All right, so this is just the tool that we use and the tool that you got the packet from. There's, I believe, eighteen, nineteen projects on the CIP plan. This is the first page on the tool. And then as we go into each one of those, that's where we can dive into and look at what we're doing. So the first project on the list and the highest scoring project was Kevore Avenue from Cascade down to Court and doing, or doing Court in Mill Street. So there's the map showing the project area for this improvement. One of the reasons we looked at this as being one of the highest is, number one, the condition of the street and the utilities. Streets are in very poor condition down there. And this is an area that's used by everybody in the community. And when you look at our downtown area, we've done a lot of improvements down there. And with some of the improvements we're doing yet this fall with the railroad crossings. And if we were to do this, this would really button up that core downtown area downtown. So that's why we have that one as the highest. And then if we move over to the next highest on the list, the second for 2026 would be the project on Cleveland Avenue. So again, this is another thoroughfare in the community, goes by the school. People are, you know, a lot of people are coming through, driving on that street. And so, again, very important area to do. And just to mention, those two projects are on our state aid system, so we can use state aid funds for those projects. And then the third one for 2026 is on Douglas Avenue. And again, this is one where it's in a residential community. It's, we're really trying to get one to fit into 2026. This is a smaller type project from a cost standpoint, and we're trying to make some of the numbers work. And so this is a smaller project. This would not be on the state aid system. So that's why we have that one on 2026. So those are the three projects that we looked for to do in 2026. I'm going to turn this over to Josiah, and we're going to jump into the Kevore project and show you what we did to each one of these projects as we dive into how we came up with the costs and where the funding and the financing sits for each one. Because we did, we have worked with Bill and with Andrew on these projects and where they fit into the different accounts that we have within the city, and then where are we getting some state aid potential dollars to fit into the projects? And we'll go through that now.
One thing I would like to touch on too, just with the 2026 projects, is we've just identified three again that we've kind of prioritized based on what was on the existing CIP. I just want to point out that there are four other projects that are happening in 2026 based on some funding sources. So I'll just go through those very quickly. You have the alley project that bids out, I believe, tomorrow. You have DeLagoon Park Road, which has, it has a state-funded, I can't remember, a DNR fund that's allocated to the project for the access road, basically the whole loop around the park. And then the funding is specific because of the boat ramp that's located at the backside of DeLagoon Park. Two-ten, the bridge replacement with the roundabouts. There's a letter in hand that kind of lays out what the city's funds required to complete that project are. And then Pebble Lake Road and Freiburg, which are a mill and overlay and ADA improvements. And so when we start looking at the funding piece of this, I'm going to show you, I'm going to look specifically at Kevore Avenue. They're all broken down, almost identical, except for where the funding comes from. But just know that the funds, when we look at like a breakdown of what does this look from a magnitude of the city, it's going to include all seven of those, with four of them kind of just happening already. And three of them we're looking for more direction on. So I'm going to jump into Kevore Avenue. We've identified it here. Hopefully, you can see it on our maps. It is the downtown area. It's in yellow, roughly the middle of the screen there. And so that's the area we're looking at. Again, just to reiterate what Kyle said, again, this is looking at a complete reconstruction from the utilities, which is the water sewer, storm sewer, and the roadway. So we're looking at sidewalks, driveways, curb and gutter, pavement, and everything. And so if you read the purpose and need, which the packet that you guys received is basically a summary of the page I'm showing up here, along with the project area and then some photos of the project area that we went out and took on site. And so I'm not going to read the exact purpose and need and the scope, but just so you know, that is the intent of this project. When we start looking at the funding information, this is what I'm going to show you a little more of. How did we come about this number and where did we land on? How do we determine the water fund, the sewer fund, and all those items? So for each project, we have identified again the project area. What we like to do is we put together a spreadsheet of what are all of the items that can be identified that need to be reconstructed during this project. This isn't working for me. Hold on just a second. I might not be able to show you.
It probably doesn't matter.
Yeah. I'll walk through this page here. For some reason, it's froze up. But essentially, what we've done is we've gone and we've looked through the project area. We've identified what is existing, because obviously, that's important. And then what do you need to do to improve the project area? So when you go through, is there anything that needs to be upsized when we're looking at like a storm sewer standpoint? How's the water, the sewer, and different areas like that? And we've basically identified, here's what's needed. And the important part with the CIP is not to get your numbers perfect, right? Where at this point, we don't know everything within this project area. But what is important is finding out where do these funds land? And so just so you're all aware, when we start looking at the true splits of the funds, we're looking at a, what is a water cost? So that is... Anything related to the construction of water. So it'd be your water mains, it would be your services, your curb stops, connecting to all of that. Your sewer funds are only the sewer item. So you're looking at your manholes, your services, your mains. And of course, the streets is typically the big one because that's where your expense fighting comes in. It's your curb and gutter, your sidewalks, your driveways, your pavements. And so when we start looking at the splits within the CIP tool, that's how those numbers come about, is these are the funds and the splits that we've gone through. Now, when we look at certain streets, Kevore, Cleveland are really good examples. They are on MinDOT's state aid route. And so what you can do with those is you can use state aid funding, which the city gets an allocation every year, to apply towards the street improvements on a project. You cannot use those for water sewer, different things like that. You can use it for a proportionate amount of the storm sewer. So what they do there is they look at what is the contributing area within the right-of-way of that roadway? And how much stormwater does that attribute to this drainage area? And you can take that percentage of the area to determine how many dollars or what percentage of the funds can you utilize to fund storm sewer. And so what you can see here is we have a state aid storm sewer, state aid street. Those lumped together to gave us a, here's how much funding you can use from a state aid perspective. And then the breakdowns of your water sewer, storm, roadway, and what you can't see just at the screen here is a special assessment dollar. So that number is determined based upon the city's policy, which it's a little difficult to explain, but they break it out by commercial and residential. Commercial is hit with a little higher assessment based upon, everything is based upon the traffic volume of the roadway, the size of the street, and then the design of the street. So if you're talking a nine-ton street versus a five-ton street, residents only get hit for a five-ton, basically attributing amount. So their assessment value drops, which rightfully so, they're not using a road for a nine-ton value, they're using it for a five-ton. And then based upon the overall traffic counts of that street, as the traffic counts get higher, the assessments drop, basically because more people are using their street than just the users on the street. And so in your small residential areas, obviously, the traffic counts are low, they're going to get hit higher with a higher assessment versus in like a commercial district like this where there's a lot of traffic going on Kevore. I say all that to say that we have taken a percentage of this cost estimate and a percentage of all of these to say, here is a proposed assessment value that we can estimate for a funding perspective, is what that comes down to. So with that being said, I'll go back...
I'm sure you memorized all that. What Josiah did is he built a nice spreadsheet to calculate all that for each one of these projects.
Yeah. And exactly. And we used, Devin and Troy were crucial in coming through and helping us start compiling these numbers. So it's not just Kyle and I up here, it's taken kind of the whole team to really go through and identify... What needs to be done and what do we need to do to make sure that these are successful projects? So with that, again, we can look at, and you can look at your packet in terms of all of these projects of what is the water, storm sewer, bond, special and sewer funds that are going to be required in the CIP, again, at concept level, to construct these projects? And like Kyle said, this isn't just construction now, this is the full construction, inspection, engineering, it's hitting everything. And so these numbers should encapsulate, again, beginning to end of a project and what does that take? So, yeah, with all of that said, I think what I'll do, unless we want to take a deep dive into any other projects, I would like to kind of walk into the reports piece, and I'll hand it back over to Kyle to kind of walk through. What are we looking at with the seven projects that we've identified for 26 and the potential projects for 27? What is the total value and where do these funds come from to start seeing the magnitude of how much work is out there? So...
Okay. So when Josiah brings this up, and we might have to blow that up a little bit because some of our eyesight isn't quite as good. So when we take those, when we take those costs and those different funds from the different projects, that's where the tool now is bringing that into an annual basis. So here, when you look at, let's just look at 26 and 27. So for 26, the different accounts there, you see bridge, sanitary sewer, storm sewer, street, and water main. That's where we're breaking out those different funds. And so that Bill can look at, how do those fit into our system in Fergus Falls? So that's where that's showing that. So for the sanitary sewer for year one, 1.2 million, storm sewer, just over a million. The streets are 6.9 million, and then water main, 1.4 million. And so the total, the total project annual cost that we're looking at for... Well, and then on the bottom, the soft costs, those are broken down and need to go into that.
So we can look at funding by source.
There we go. So then when we break out that funding by source...
Okay, so bond and...
Bond issue, general fund, sewer fund, special assessments, storm sewer and water main fund. So that's where we're breaking that down into the different funds. And then on the total there for 2026, we've got 12.2 million, of which down below, we've got some grant funds built into that, 1.8 million from the federal stip. That's coming on the Freiburg and Pebble Lake Roads. And then the municipal state aid money, the 2.1 million would be built into those projects that are within the state aid system. And then the state grant funds of 209,000, and that's that DNR funding for DeLagoon Park. So that's, that's all grant money that would be built into the project. So the other funds then, as we go up to the top, would be from the, working from the bottom up, the water fund, the storm sewer fund, special assessments, the sewer fund and the general fund. And then the bond issue that we would be looking at for 2026 is 3.3 million.
What was it in 2025?
We only issued 760...
It was really low, that's what I thought, okay.
That's why we placed it locally and didn't go...
Yep, okay.
So on a side note with this, the special assessments, we will bond for that as well. That'll get rolled into the bond issue, but the assessments are the funding source. So they're separating out bond issues so we can drill into what are levy impacts.
Correct.
Yeah, because those special assessments will be paid over 15 years. That's why we structure a bond issue 15 years or so.
And then correct me, Bill, if I say this wrong, but then, once we understand what we're doing for 2026, we still have to go into those sewer funds, storm funds and water funds and do a rate analysis to see what that really means to the people within the community. We kind of have to know what that number is before we would jump into really doing that rate analysis piece.
Because these are huge cost drivers of what the rates need to be. We did take a more aggressive approach in 2024 when we were talking about an aggressive plan. 2025, we did not adjust rates, so we held them flat. So we really, once you as a council figure out what direction do we want to go, then we'll build those 10-year projections again of how this all fits in in each individual utility fund. And that, you know, something will happen this fall.
So the tax levy increase doesn't impact until 2027?
Correct. Yep, because we would construct in 26, issue bonds in 26 to fund those projects, first payments due one year later.
Okay.
You want to walk through the scenarios?
Yeah, let's do that. Okay. So we built in a couple of different scenarios on how we're going to, if we took one off or took a couple off, how we can do that. And we'll be able to run through that as we go. But so we did the same for 27, 28, 29. And so we were really running around that $12 million per annual of total project cost per year for the next, you know, four years. I think, I think year four, it really starts to drop off. But there, we're getting out, we're getting out quite a ways. And again, we still probably need to do a little bit of work on those yet, so... So yeah, so questions on anything that you want to look at or don't understand what we've gone through so far?
So these are major reconstruction projects, and you mentioned a little bit of like the overlay. Are there other overlay projects that would be happening in addition to these? Because I mean, there are some other streets that could use overlay.
Yeah, so right now in your budget, you have Mill and Overlay funds and Seal Code funds that we're doing annually. Those are above and beyond these projects.
So those would continue as...
Those would continue, yes.
And are you guys going to take a look at that to look at if we're doing, you'll come with a proposal on where the most need is and kind of retake a look at that?
Yeah, so actually, what we're planning is to do one of the same planning for the Mill and Overlay and Seal Co. projects. What we want to get to is have a four- or five-year plan of the Mill and Overlay projects that we're looking at doing so that we can really start to plan and phase this out on where that, where those funds are to make sure that we're really covering our streets that we should be. Again, the Mill and Overlay projects that you guys have been doing are very, very important projects to do because if you look at, if we let those Mill and Overlay areas get bad to the point where we have to totally reconstruct them, it costs five times more to do a total reconstruct than a Mill and Overlay. So we want to make sure that we're saving those streets and planning properly to do that. So that is still in the budget. All right, he's up and running. So here, we've got some different alternates, and again, you might have to blow those numbers up so that we can see them. So the projects that we went through for 2026, the Cleveland, Douglas, the alleyways, parking lots, Freiburg, Pebble Lake Road, and DeLagoon Park, those projects, if we did all of them, now this is looking at a bonding scenario. So alternate number one has all of the projects within the numbers for bonding. And so the numbers you see behind each project there, the 1.2, the 992, the 552, the 220, and the 286, or the 286 for DeLagoon Park, that would be the total amount that we would look at bonding for those projects after we've gone through the funds and applied state aid and grant dollars. Okay? So that's where that 3.3 number is that we would have to bond. Again, running down the spreadsheet, looking at the total amount that we would have to make as a payment, $312,000 annually. And that's running that at 4.25% over 15 years. When we talked to the financial people, they thought 3.75 was kind of the number, but bump it up a half percent to, for a cushion, you know, projecting out a year, so...
And then I'll explain the last line, and there the levy, 105%. We always start that way with our levies. We'd come up with what the debt service is, and then you levy 105% to allow for any delinquencies or whatnot. So you need a little cushion in the levy over the debt service payment. And that's what the bond attorney tells us we need to be doing, is that 105%.
Sure.
And that's historically what we've always done, we've always followed that. And then after a few years, you can start ratchet that down to exactly that annual payment, if you built a little cushion.
That's about 4% on tax levy, you think? Increase about 4%?
It's the 3.83%.
Okay, so I was just doing it in my head, so I'm pretty close, son.
Really close. Good math.
So is, are the numbers, if you extrapolate out beyond 26, when you start looking at the projects for 27, if they're around that 12 million point two, are we looking at about the same in levy that year? Or like, if we just start extrapolating out here, are we looking at about that same percentage and impact on the levy?
Do we have 27 summarize of what the bond amount?
Sorry, maybe we got, I asked...
It's only, the annual payment's 312 on, if we did everything.
For this year. But next year, I'm saying if we do 27, then are we doing another 312? You know what I mean? Like if we're following, what's the next year? Like is it double that or is it half of that? Or what does that start looking at?
It's actually higher in 27, 5.4.
Yeah, it'd be 5.4 million in 27 projects.
And then 3.3 million the following year.
Yep.
So we're between three and five, basically.
Yeah. And the reason for that is, is some of the grant funding and the state aid dollars are a little bit lower in 27.
Your honor, a couple of thoughts that come to mind for me. State aid, we're using state aid heavy in 26, so the balance goes down to zero. One of the things that we can talk about, we haven't thus far, is advancing state aid. A lot of communities, Alexandria being one of them, they take their allocations years ahead. You can advance up to five years.
Correct.
So we have, we get about $977,000 a year approximately in state aid funding. You can take five times that amount, advance it early. None of these scenarios assume any advancement of funds. So, you know, we can be strategic about how we do that if we want to do that, knowing, you know, projects today are cheaper than projects tomorrow, and how we, how we use that strategically to buy down some of these bond issues. The other thought is, you know, realistically, and Bill could tell us with more accuracy, but, you know, bonds will be dropping off at certain points in time, too. So, you know, as, as kind of one bond issue drops off after 15 years, here comes the next one because you've just continued to do those projects. So it's not, you know, there is some compounding, of course, if you're doing these heavy projects year after year, but there is some that drop off as well.
What, if you advance, though, at what point does the state say, you know, you've advanced to, you know, we're not funding you anymore until you catch up?
I don't know the exact answer, but you can go out, you can go out five years and take it...
So technically, I mean, in round numbers, we get $1 million a year.
Yeah, we get a million, so you could, I mean, we could probably go and get about $4 million of additional funds advancement.
Yeah. But it has to qualify, though.
Correct.
Has to be a state aid road.
Yeah, it does have to be a state aid road, correct.
So how much?
And, and we had talked to MinDOT about this. So we have some big projects that are coming up with the trunk, you know, the interchange project, the federal state aid projects that we're working on with Pebble Lake Road. And then we also have Channing and springing in some additional roads that are coming up that are federally state aided funded projects, which we get some, some state aid that goes, Minnesota state aid that goes to that as well. And those score very high when you're trying to advance because they want to make sure that those projects have the funding behind them to do. So there are, there are some opportunities for us to be able to do the advancement today, which I think would score us fairly high.
I think it would be helpful to know, and I know we don't need that today, but to know these falloff bonds that do fall off, because if, to me, it's a lot easier to say yes to that kind of debt service if we have this much falling off and then this much the following year, because then it has less impact to the citizens on the tax levy side of things.
Sure.
I don't think, if I remember, I don't think we have 300,000 dropping off. I think the police one is the one that's going to drop off next.
The largest one, yeah, and that's a few years old. We prepared this for the tax levy committee, so I know we haven't prepared it, just not on me today, so... on me today, so.
Ken?
So, question, as far as the specifics of what roads are selected for reconstruction, and then you mentioned earlier some about what's going to be Mill and Overlay or Seal Code. People might look at this and say, well, what about this particular street or that particular street? I don't see it on this map. Well, maybe it ends up on the Mill and Overlay map, or maybe it's going to get a Seal Code. You're going to need to be able to compare that, so that'll be really helpful. But somebody might look at, say, for example, West Vernon or West Vassa and say, well, this is a reconstruction project for sure, it's not on that map or any other map, what's up with that? How do we answer those questions?
Again, that's where, we have not had a chance to really go around the community and add projects to this list. This is right off of the existing CIP plan that we had, that the city had put together in the past. We still need to do that over the next period of time, we just haven't had time to do that. So, again, this, this document and this plan needs to continue to be updated and, and adjusted. So those are things where, over the next number of months, we will be going through and adding some of those into future years. And so, if there are at, at that point, those are things we want to hear from people. And, and there's probably going to be, I think a CIP plan, there should be some public comment. Once we, once we get a chance to get out there and do that, maybe we hold some public meetings and have people come in, and we sit down and just have a open session where people can talk about different things, and, you know, we can take a look at them then. And we can do that on an annual basis.
And we used to do that a number of years ago, that all went through the Planning Commission, and they would hold a CIP hearing and...
Yep.
Yeah, but we hold multiple of them, and just people don't come.
Sure.
I think we should probably go back to the alternate.
Sure.
Because at, at the end of the day, it's kind of what, what is the appetite of the council to?
Correct.
At the end of the day, how much money are we prepared to spend?
Correct. So, a- as we go down to the different alternates, so the alternate one has all of the projects. So, just so we know, all of the alternates there, you can see the bottom three projects, the alley parking wa- the alley and parking lots, the Freiburg Pebble Lake Road and D Lagoon Road. Those are projects that we have in there every, on all of the alternates, because the funding is in place to do those, so we have to do those, okay? So if we go to alternate two, that's where we've dropped off the Douglas project and moved that one to the following year. So as you can see, what that does is changes our bonding from 3.3 down to 2.7. And, and, and so then, if you go all the way down to the bottom, the annual payment there is about $261,000. And then when you go to the 105% coverage, about $274,000. Then if you go to alternate number three, now we've taken off Cleveland and pushed that back a year. And so basically, we're doing Kevor, and then the alley, Freiburg and D Lagoon Park. So you can see what that does, reduces it down from 2.7 then to 2.3, with the total 105% coverage at 228,000. And then alternate number four would be not doing any of those three projects, correct?
No.
Or doing, or taking Kevor off and doing? Kevor and Cle- Kevor and Cleveland off and doing Douglas, correct? Okay.
Those are two most important roads, not Douglas.
Sorry, that would be doing Cleveland and Douglas.
Cleveland and Doug, taking Kevor off and doing Cleveland and Douglas.
But Kevor is more important than Douglas.
Correct. I, I would agree.
According to Josiah, so we use that road so much, so.
Yep.
Do you want to talk a little bit about why Douglas could be placed in a certain spot?
Yeah, I mean, we certainly can.
Because, let them know that Union, South Union, has one coming in the future as well.
Yeah. And again, part of this conversation is to get your guys' input on, what do you guys see as valuable, right? So if we start looking at this, again, the three projects that we've identified, hopefully everyone can see this, but you have Kevor, you have Cleveland, and we have Douglas. Kevor and Cleveland, identified both those, they do have the state aid funds, which helps in the overall general bond. And so, keeping those ones in there and utilizing those funds helps advance projects. And they're in areas where, obviously, we have Cleveland School up here, this is a street that is heavily used, and we also have Kevor, which kind of, touching on Kyle's point, it closes off the downtown, right? There was the Mill and Overlay, they're doing the railroad crossings, and they've done work down there, and this would kind of button up that area.
Question on that, can I ask you a quick question on downtown?
Yes.
Where are we at with Mill and Overlay on Washington? Because I've started having people say things about Washington at some point.
So, currently, Washington's shown as 28.
That's 28, sorry, I couldn't read the address on that road.
Yeah. So, and again, we can adj- and I can show you in here how we can adjust these projects. It is very easy to see, how does the funding split and where does it go, just by moving years, right? We're looking at this five, what was the number for '27? It was like 5.5. We can very quickly move projects year to year, so you can see what is the adjustment, or how does it affect the different funding sources by moving one project further out or, or pulling it up, right? Specifically looking at Douglas, so why we identified this one, it is one of the smallest projects on the current CIP, and so in terms of dollar value, it is, I believe, the smallest when we're looking at a full reconstruct. The second thing it sets you up for is Union Avenue, which is another state aid route. The reason we did not select that one is, obviously, there is a limit to the state aid funds. And so having too many in one year, you can look at advancement, but you can overload that, right? If we were to do Douglas before Union, whether that's this year or next year, you would be able to have this road complete prior to all of your construction traffic routing on a brand-new Union, right? So I would just prioritize Douglas over Union for that reason. When they come in with trucks and everything, they're going to be hauling down Union and then coming down Alcott and out to 94, wherever they're going. And so, that's why Douglas has been identified. Again, cost, trying to keep that in mind, but also when you look at overall constructability of, we don't want to drive a whole bunch of construction traffic over a brand-new road. So, that's why Douglas was another selection for '26. So thoughts on, on where the alternates sit? Thoughts on some of the areas we've laid out? I'd like to hear from the council on, what do you think about the plan?
The only, you know, the only thing alternates do, I think, is just prolong or defer. It just makes it bottle, bottle up down the road some more, and I think we should just go ahead with alternate number one and start with that, that '26. And 4% is 4%. I rounded it up, but it probably will be that much by the time we get to that year. Who knows what the price is going to go? But I just think we should just leave it and get the projects you got in place done, especially after Josiah just said about not driving equipment across a brand-new road is really, you know, so I think it's a good idea. And the Kevor is bad, we know Cleveland is junk, you know, we just need to get them done. It'll be a busy season next year, but it'd be a good thing to get done. And that's what we're all elected for, to get the dang roads done. And nobody wants to raise taxes, and I just looked at what I kind of figured out, mine cost me about $460 a year between my house and my shop, so. Be cheaper if we had, went to the, I'll bring that bad word up, franchise fee, but that's okay, I mean, you're about $100 a month.
Yep.
It's whether you pay the tax of your left pocket or your right pocket.
Yeah, it's about $100 difference a month, so.
But I mean, I think, as you say, because if you defer one of these projects to '27, then in '27, you're going to defer another project to '28, and, and '28, '29.
It starts to push them all back, yeah.
Which is why we're sitting where we are, in all actuality.
And I think that's one thing that people have to realize, that is, this is continuous delaying of doing the necessary work. Yeah, eventually, you kind of have to bite the bullet and do.
That's where we're going from 700,000 this year, or is it this year bill, and then to 3 million, you know, next year, so it's just a...
Where technically, you could have spent 2 million each year.
Right.
I think we should do the same thing.
Yeah. Other people's thoughts?
I agree, I think we need to bite the bullet and get it done.
You know, we'll be presenting the preliminary budget on the 10th that morning. So after we get that, you know, we're going to regroup and be looking at rate analysis then the rest of September and into October. Should really get those done in October, because they're going to want to start knowing November, where we're going, because you as a council want to know, what are those sewer, water, and stormwater rates? What's that going to mean?
They probably need to know middle of October, based on our discussions earlier.
Because you need to do fieldwork before.
Yeah, we need to do fieldwork to get these projects done. And I know from Josiah's team, the sooner the better, just from a standpoint of staff being able to get on the projects. But we, we do not want to get to a point where we're going out surveying these when there's snow and ice on the roads. That makes it very difficult and takes a lot of time to chisel out curb and gutter to get curb shots.
Your Honor. First of all, I appreciate being on the levy committee. Just to recap, Kyle, thank you. Great presentation. I love it, don't get me wrong. What was your bonding? What was the rate you were using?
4% in this cost estimate.
Four and a quarter percent.
Or four and a quarter, sorry.
And is 15 years the max? Is that what I'm hearing?
No, it's not the max, that's what, we use 15 years, because that's what we collect the assessments over, and also, you get to 15 years, and you're looking at time, and correct me, engineers, if I'm wrong, to do, you know, a Mill and Overlay. So you want to pay for what you did first, before you have to start doing some major maintenance on it, is that how?
Correct. Typically, asphalt streets, you know, last about 15-year design life before you start doing some maintenance on them. So you're correct. It's very nice to have those paid for before you have to start paying for them again.
Yep.
Thank you, I understand that. I, I think what would help me is this presentation, even though it's called CIP, includes all the projects, be it an overlay, be it a water tower, be it a whatever. Difficult for me, as a councilperson or a citizen, to say, okay, today, you know, we're only going to spend this much more money, and then next month you come in, well, yeah, we didn't talk about that last week, but now we're going to do a new water tower. And then two weeks later, we go in and says, well, yeah, by the way, there was some Mill and Overlay. If this was on one, one format, so that the whole project can go in front of a levy committee, and there's, there's not 15 sheets that I have to go to to bring this together, to address some council people's concerns, over the next, one, two, three, four, five, six years, our annual debt service averages $917,000. I appreciate everybody wanting to not push these things out, but I think prudence comes into play financially. If I just put a $40,000 roof on my house, I don't know if I can afford to put a $40,000 addition on it. I disagree, too, also, that interest rates will go down, and I do believe that in '27, '28, rates and costs will go down. I've heard it many times, you know, if we fall behind now, we'll be that far further behind the next year. No disrespect, Fergus is buying, I mean, let's, let's be realistic. So does it really matter if it's '26 or '27 or '28, as we step into these things that are, you know, if you will? The, the layout here is ideal, I can capture all the information, I can present it, not in addition, not, not just on the, on the capital improvements and the bonding requirements, we also look at, at our funding, our fund balances in sewer, water, and storm. Those things should be put in there. I mean, there's a lot to balance, and I've, I've spoke to a lot of people on, not only the city budget, but a regular business budget, you know, there's a lot of consideration to make. And then plus, let's not forget, you know, the hiccups that come up automatically. So again, this is the best program, I recommend that, you know, we include everything, we get us just a general thing, and then monitor the, the fund balances, so we don't have to not only increase these, let's say we blow this thing up and go all four or five units, and then all of a sudden, Bill comes back and says, well, you know, we've got to raise water fees, we've got to water. I don't want to surprise anybody. I want to look at the whole picture and present it to the, the public. Again, best layout I've ever seen, thank you very much.
Any other comments?
A couple of things. When, if we do the bonding for part of the fire truck, when do we start paying for that? Because that's going to be a significant number as well.
Yeah, I think, was that 29, 30?
It's a three-year build, right? So it's a three-year build?
Yeah, it was a four, it's actually a four-year build.
Four-year build, okay.
You know, six, seven, eight, nine. I think the first levy would be in 2030 on that, but in that, you know, like Kyle said, all these other projects, as they can get to it, are going to get added into this, because this will be our CIP, where that fire truck will be in here, but, I mean, you're starting with the 2026 projects for obvious reasons, but...
Right.
Yep.
So we're, we're years out on that.
And when we do our utility rate analysis, we do build in those water tower rehabs, other things that the plants, whatnot, because we are exactly looking at those fund balances to make sure, how is our cash balance going to run for the next 10 years? We can't, you know, we need to know what it's going to be 10 years from now, so that we're managing it over time and not, I don't want to have it up.
One, go ahead.
That's, that's the next step. Once we kind of get some direction of what you as a council would like to see, again, really in October, getting those utility analysis dialed in, so we can show you, and if you'll recall from past years, we show, here's our cash balance going up. And if we don't adjust rates, but we do all these projects, here's where cash will go. Okay, well, if we adjust rates here, then here's where the cash balance goes, so.
I guess one thing, like, when you say it's five times more expensive to do a reconstruct on a road, I think that continuing the Mill and Overlay as planned and budgeted is important. But I also think we need from you gentlemen and your coworkers, a recommendation of, if we upped that Mill and Overlay 20%, 15%, 30%, how much does that save us if we look at doing more in the long run with reconstruction? And so like, as we're looking at that personally, I would like to see if there's a recommendation to take a different approach that maybe is more aggressive on Mill and Overlay, to reduce how many reconstructions we have as we go out three, four, five, six, 10 years.
Yeah, and once we get into that, we'll have that, yep.
I mean, there is a reality that, like, Kevor is shut. So another, another year on Kevor, it's, it's not, it's going to have a few more potholes, but it's, it's, it's shot is shot. Versus, as you say, if there's two streets that would benefit from Mill and Overlay or Seal Coating, then, then that's obviously, you know, preventative maintenance for future. But I mean, the other way that we can kind of look at this is that, you know, as kind of Mark, you know, alluded to, we have about a million dollars a year of debt service, you know, is that, is that the piece that you, you, you look at, that we, we only want to have, you know, X, X amount of debt service per annum, you know, that we need to service? And, and, you know, we do, it does drop off, you know, but, but, you know, some of those are obviously on different timetables, you know, that, it's not that they drop off, you know, literally one necessarily every year. I mean, but there is a, there is a significant drop at, at one point, but I can't remember what it was.
I think that's up to the police departments, you know. In general, our street projects, and I know we saw this when we did that franchise fee analysis, that over time, our street levies have gone down from the PIR bonds. So, remember Tyson presenting that before, had, you know, had we kept on that trajectory, we would have been up.
Jim?
As we're doing these street projects, are we looking at the lead we have in the town?
Yes, yep. We've, we've correlated the lead map with the different projects. You know, when you look at the, the lead service lines in town, and Josiah pulled the map up, so there's a couple of different hot, what we call hotspots within the community. And then, there's really just a smattering of, you know, onesies and twosies all over the community, which, you know, we just have to...
Red and blue.
Red and blue is non-lead, so it could be anything, poly, copper.
And is there a year we have to have the lead out by?
That I don't know.
I thought at some point there was talk of that.
It's like 10 years.
From now?
Yes.
10 years from next April.
From next April.
And we haven't heard any more on state funding for that?
No, right now, the, the funding is to identify them, as far as getting them replaced, yet to come. So, I, I don't know the streets, looking at the map.
Kind of hotspots, we have this Vernon, and when we say hotspots, we're talking where there's clusters of them, like, if we start zooming in, you can find lead service lines kind of scattered everywhere when you come and start looking at projects. It's kind of hard to identify one project that really encapsulates a ton of them, but like Vernon Avenue, this is Casey's here, and then, there we go. So that would be one area, and then along Union, kind of that whole strip, it seems like there's a lot up to Beach Avenue and...
Yeah, we don't worry about people that live on Union.
And then the other one is, kind of here by Laurel and Spruce Street, there was...
So what about, what about Douglas, Cleveland, and, and Kevor, you know, the, the projects that we're actually looking at?
Cleveland has none. Kevor, I'm off by a block, where am I off?
Road north.
There you are. Right here. So there's a few with the businesses, I'm trying to remember. So that is public side, so the right dot is... remember. So that is public side. So the right dot is your public, the left is your private. So there's a handful there, but again, it's highly commercial, so there's not a ton of service lines in general there. And then Douglas, there's one that'll actually be addressed with Union, but it looks like there's a handful, quite a few handfuls that aren't even shown. So we don't know at this point, but...
So we come back to, these gentlemen need some direction. So obviously, we've got comments that do, you know, do them all.
Could you put it back to that page with the money? Mike just showed up so you can see how much we were spending.
You're talking, report.
The one with the...
Alternates.
The alternates on it, that would be the best. Here you go.
And then is it possible to get this kind of one circulated?
Mike, if you look at, if you look at these different alternates and what we've been talking about, in some of the projects we've already discussed, the D Lagoon Park project, that's out at the park, doing the road out there. And I'm working from the bottom up on the spreadsheet of the projects there because those are the ones we have in here that we have funding for and are going to be done already. So Freiburg, Pebble Lakes, got funding, and the alleys and parking ways, that one, we're bidding that here tomorrow. So those we have built into what we would need for bonding. And then the projects we talked about doing for 2026 was Kevor, Cleveland, and Douglas, the top three projects. And so as we went into those and looked at the different financing, what pieces would we pull out of the financing that we would have to bond for? So each one of those options there shows in any year what the bonding would be. So alternate one includes doing all of those bond, doing all those projects in 2026, which means we would have to bond about 3.3 million. And if you go all the way down to the bottom, our 105 coverage, we cover 5% extra over the bond at 4.25% for 15 years, would be about 327,000. If we go, if we go to taking Douglas off the project, which would be alternate number two, our total bonding would be about 2.7 with a $274,000 annual payment. Alternate number three takes Douglas off, so just doing Kevor plus, or takes Cleveland off, sorry. And then doing those other three projects, reduces it down to 2.3 million with a $228,000. And then alternate four is taking Kevor off and doing Cleveland and Douglas and those other projects. Alt four is...
Just Douglas.
So from a summary point of view, in reality, I think it's tough to probably make an absolute decision until we get some, I think, some follow-up on the rate analysis to the funds as well as where, what bonding payments drop off.
But you'd like to know, what concept do you like, so we have, so we know what ballpark to work in? Is that a...
Yeah, to do the rate analysis, probably should have an idea of, yeah, what concept do you like, so we can run those numbers for the rate analysis. Correct?
Yes. Yep.
Your Honor, Kyle, could you send me this presentation? Because it was not included in the CIP plan, correct? I'll be the first to admit that I can't keep track. If you're keeping every other one, every third one, or every fifth one in these options, so it'd be helpful.
Yep, we can get that to you.
I think, too, if you're looking for, you know, support for this, support for that, as we've heard from at least three others here, I would support alternate one to go for it. And then we'll just have to figure out how to pay for it. So that'd be my option.
I think that, in my opinion too, the, you know, you're looking at the number one and number two. I think Cleveland is a must. I mean, that, that road is something. But then you look at, you know, how Douglas fits in with the next plan, you know, it kind of makes sense. And not to, you know, keep those roads good. How that works out, I think you've planned it out very well. I think we just maybe need to just look at it a little bit. But I like, you know, one and two, just because it's, it seems well thought out. But Cleveland is a wreck. And that's just embarrassing to drive down there.
The other scenario is that we spend the money in 26 and then bond for 27. So if the 27 budget, we go towards not this budget.
Right. So what we kind of land on here is also what I'll put in the 26 budget for the capital improvement fund, that's saying, here's how much we'll do in streets, you know, projects. The levies don't come on, like we said, until 27. But you would show, what we kind of arrive at here is what would, you'll see in some slides in the budget presentation as well, of what projects would be on tap for 2026 construction.
So for 27's construction, when it jumps up, kind of significantly here, closer to that five number, is that a year where it makes sense to look at some scenarios of borrowing that state aid forward or advancing that state aid?
For sure. Yes, we can definitely look at that. And see how that fits into...
How that would impact and impact...
How that impacts it, yep.
Right. And to me, that would make sense because it, you kind of go from the three to the five, back down to the three range. So it would make sense to look at that five year at where we maybe do the advancing that Andrew talked about.
Correct. That's, that makes sense.
And, you know, we've, we've heard this before too, everyone, is that, you know, when we were all running, that's all we heard about was roads. You know, it was roads, roads, roads. I think people realize they're going to have to, you know, things are going to have to change a little bit too, because we got to fix the roads. And, you know, believe me, I don't want to spend any money, any taxpayer money. But that was a huge, huge thing in a campaign was the roads.
And I don't think it would be fair to say that I think people have a better understanding of the road, if the tax that they're paying is spent in their community as opposed to kind of like the check that goes to kind of St. Paul, you know?
Well, I would think so.
Hope so.
Yeah, I would think they could realize that.
Yep.
So do you need, what do you, we can't do really anything here?
It doesn't need any motion or anything. It's just a kind of like, they just need direction.
Yeah, I think now kind of understanding a little bit where the council wants to go, now we can hone in on that and get you some better numbers of what that really means.
So is the best time to go out for bids, sorry, out in January? Or like, what's the ideal time to be bidding to get favorable prices?
That January, February timeframe.
But there's engineering work that needs to be done prior to that.
Yep. And, and there's also approval time too. You know, these state aid projects, they have to be sent in and gone over by, by their engineers as well. And that takes, what, a month?
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Let's talk a little bit about the street reconstruction bonding too, because historically, we've done a lot of bonding through the Minnesota statute 429. We'll have to determine, will the assessments meet the requirements as far as the percentage to use 429? If not, then we need to use street reconstruction bond statute, which means we would have to have a separate hearing on a five-year street improvement plan to give us the authority for bonding. So we would incorporate that this fall as well too, to lay that out, just so that we're geared up and ready to get it all done.
And, you know, no disrespect, Mark, I think, you know, you're always hit the nail on the head with the money part. I really appreciate that. And, but it's coming down to these roads. And that's what I think we got to try to fix. But, you know, if you can wiggle some money someplace, whatever you can do with your financing, that's great, or whatever ideas you may have. I totally look to you for that. And I think everyone else would too. But, you know, I'm, I think we got to get our roads fixed.
Kyle, you would be surprised, but it goes back 30 years if you've heard about roads.
Oh, I know. I can believe that.
All right. Well, we will, we will go back and we will start to hone in on these numbers and get some, some new numbers and better numbers for you guys.
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
Probably another work session, I bet.
Probably, yeah.
Yeah. I mean, just, just out of interest on the 26, about 35% of that 12 million is not, is funded from external sources.
Right. Right.
And we will continue to look for additional funding to throw into this as, as we move forward.
And can we start looking at the 27 projects for that funding too at this point?
Yep.
I think we need to get 26 done.
I get that. But I mean, if there's stuff out there that's further out.
I think, but, but I think once they have understanding of where we want to go, then I think, as you say, we can, but we can start work on 27 once in January type of thing.
Correct.
So with that, we are, we are done.